So we'll call a meeting to order. We get started off right away with communication, you know.
All right, sounds good. So I will invite Cassie, our elementary principal up, to take a peek at our our agenda. I'm gonna share. Yeah, just some things to highlight here as we're coming in to November. In October, I shared that our Cherrydale fundraiser was rather successful. And we were slated for a fundraiser product pickup on the night. That has been moved to the 22nd. And so just updating families and making sure that they are aware of that change. I want to thank in advance our NHS members. They're going to volunteer and help with product organization and help that pick up as families come in that day. Wanted to share about fall conferences. We wrapped those up last week. Staff were in the buildings noon to 8:00 PM. Meeting with families and really building that partnership. Talking about sort of progress and setting goals for the school year. We had 92.66% of our K-5 families in attendance, which is amazing. And of those that did not attend, we had multiple, you know, points of contact and attempts to check in with those families. And so that might have looked different if they weren't in the building that day slated for conferences. But our teachers do a great job at connecting with the families that didn't make it and eventually send home materials that were discussed at conference time. Galactic Book Fair, some of our highest sales in the last three to four years is what I'm hearing. So that was great that Media Center was just buzzing with families getting their hands on books. I need to give Tina Taffin and Jeannie Omsheid a lot of credit for pulling that book fair together. There's a lot that is involved with the setup and, you know, the function of the book fair and taking that down. And so that was great to see families shopping our book fair. The profits of the book fair goes back to our students, whether it be in the library, different activities and learning experiences for our kids. We participated in letters training last week as part of our in-service day. And that was my first opportunity with our staff to go through some of that training. That's been identified as one of our areas that we're focusing on. And we specifically focused on vocabulary. And what does that look like when we're teaching elementary students? And it's been great to see these strategies already being implemented into classrooms and seeing that it is effective. Grade level meetings continue. I know I talked about that, whether that was September or October. But we continue to have those monthly meetings and it's just a time of collaboration. You can see who's involved on those meetings and that's all about meeting the needs of our students. So how do we pull together as a team to meet those needs? This year new, we created a wall of honor in honor of Veterans Day. I did put together a two-minute video. You watch it on your own time. That's just fine. My production skills are coming along. I still have some work to do. I noticed that it's not super clear. But I wanted just to portray all the involvement from our families, bringing in wall of honor, a veteran who they want to recognize. And so hopefully, you know, you can make it over for our Veteran Day program. We have the one here at the auditorium on the 8th. But we also have one that's being held at Payne'sville Elementary School. So if you are able to come, you can take a look at our wall there. We hope to keep that up. And I believe Mrs. Strand is going to share the video here in the auditorium. Great turnout. I've had positive feedback, just really bringing the school together in that capacity. So then next, we've got our third grade wax museum coming out Friday, 1:50 to 2:50. So the public is invited. That's been a tradition. And so third graders are gearing up for that and getting ready for their public appearance as someone else, a different character who's had influence on the world. And then, so that's just linking that flyer there for your information. Veterans Day program, as I noted. And then coming up, November 23rd, we have something called family groups. And I wasn't sure of your awareness or the public's awareness. But we divide up all K through five students into what we call family groups. And each group has representation of K through five. And it's led by an adult from the school and we do different activities and just really build that relationship across the board, across the grade levels. And so we have Turkey Bingo scheduled that day that we will do schoolwide in the family groups to really just build in that relationship.
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
As they transition into sixth and seventh grade, because it's been a few years. Is there, maybe they already are mentor, like to, you know, the seventh grader helping that sixth grader come through, like whoever was in their group?
Sure.
Is that? I don't know when it appears.
Well, last year would have been the first year.
Yep. So interesting, like to have that.
Next year, yep. I can't speak to that just because I don't have the knowledge of what was done in the past, but. And lastly, just to provide you some pictures of our fall fun yesterday. We had a wacky day throughout the school yesterday and just participating and embracing the fun of yesterday. So. Any questions or anything?
Looks like you're having fun.
Fun with learning, yes, absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, David, knock it up and tell us what's going on at the secondary, please.
All right, so we have a few things going on that I want to just get you up to date on. First of all, we're going to try to get an earlier start on registration. This year, we're already talking about paring down our electives a little bit, making, looking at classes that students haven't registered for very much in the last couple of years. And kind of adjusting, looking at an alternating year offering for some of the, some of the classes that have been popular. But then it's kind of waned off a little bit because everybody's taking it. So part of that is we've gotten some feedback about block schedule. And, and so in the next couple of weeks, there's going to be a parent survey going out. And we're going to be looking for some input on scheduling and what families are looking for as far as, you know, a block schedule, hybrid, modified block schedule, period classes. And just kind of, you know, try to gauge the, you know, the temperature on where we are with our scheduling. I believe it was the fall of 2019 is when we went to the block schedule. And then by March, we were in lockdown and we adjusted things. And then we decided to keep it as is. And so we're just going to start taking a look at that. We're also starting the process of creating pathways for students. So that where they can, when they're ninth graders, they can map out their classes for the four years that they're here based on interest and whether they're looking at going to a four-year school, community college, or into the workforce. And kind of gearing, even getting them to pick their interests and moving forward through that, starting in ninth grade. And certainly those interests can change, but that's kind of what we're looking at for that. So college and career exploration, I sent home a smore to families and students a few weeks ago with some information about some events that are going on in, at local colleges. On Wednesday, November 9th, we have Ridgewater coming in to do the annual financial aid presentation for seniors and parents from 6:30 to 8:30. And then connect time, Jackie Campbell has started a weekly connect time where she is bringing in people from colleges and careers to just meet with students who are interested in that particular area. The first week, last week, she had in a person from Ridgewater who, who had a, it was titled, "So You Want to Be a College Student." And she just really informal, you know, discussion with, I think there was about 15 students that had signed up for it. And, and just, she just kind of walked through, you know, the different nuances of college life. She also had two police officers from Payne'sville Police Department come in and talk. And next week, she has an accountant coming in to talk. So she's working on somebody different each week in a different career or a different college. And so if you have any ideas, I know that we were doing that a few years ago before the pandemic hit. And having people come in and, and give talks on their career and kind of gauging the interest that way. So if you know of anybody or if anyone's interested. FFA went to, we had four students go to the FFA National Convention in Indianapolis on October 25th through the 29th. And they were able to go to a college and career expo, get tours and, and go to a lot of workshops and sessions. Bulldog Service Day on October 19th, we had our middle school students out raking leaves. And Laura Niokas and Anita Flanders have done a great job of organizing that. There's a lot goes into it because we have to find coverage for classes that, that, you know, a middle school teacher might have a high school class. And so they're kind of, there's a lot that goes into it. So I appreciate that. They did create a video. We had two seventh grade boys who Mr. Wolf gave them GoPros to wear. And that video was actually just posted today. It's on our school website and on our social media platform. So it's pretty cool. National Honor Society, we are, we've done a little bit of this already. But we're working on a schedule where some of our National Honor Society students will come into our middle school lunches. And so we have, we have seventh and eighth grade lunch, and then we have a sixth grade lunch. And they're going to come in and play games. We have a bunch of board games and card games. And then really just spending time with some of our students who may be sitting alone or, you know, just, or haven't looked up from their phone or Chromebook the whole time and just trying to engage them in different, different activities. And then our Veterans Day program is going to be Monday, November 14. And we have two programs at 10 o'clock and then at 10:40 in the auditorium. So you're welcome to come to that and I'll get my newsletter will go out tomorrow and there'll be information on that in there, too. Any questions for me?
I have a question about the block schedules. Are you, or maybe you already have, or I don't know, looking at the data from, like, have we seen any changes in the outcomes based on the block schedule versus not, like on our test scores, you know, retaining our students' graduation? I mean, we have high graduation rates, but are we seeing anything or is it kind of?
Well, I mean, I think the test scores are low all around. I think the concern, and I've researched this both ways about whether to have your core classes all year and how that would look, especially for middle school students. And so that's really what we want to look at and see if there's a way that we can incorporate that back into it.
I think the other thing that we really need to be cognizant of is last year was our true first year of implementation. You know, because the year prior, we were still in distance learning, awkward scheduling. And so, you know, and we've heard feedback about, you know, how, especially those core academic classes, how can we look at doing that differently? And, and I think if our, if our MCA data was more reliable, I think I would feel better using that as a, as a data point. But when we have so many opportunities to not, to not test, it makes it difficult to use that as a gauge point. I would say we have at, at middle school and below, we have access to FastBridge. So we've got some different data points that we can look at. But I think it's hard to, last year's data, because it was, the year before was really a different variable.
Yeah. And what we need to look at is, is middle school always had the same hourly schedule as the high school. Part of that more big reason is because of sharing staff between middle school and high school. But we're going to really take a close look at that and see if there's a way that we can have a middle school hourly schedule that meets the needs of our middle school students and then still have a schedule for nine through 12, which meets their needs. Because once, you know, they get to 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, things are a lot different. There are college courses and hybrid classes, zero-hour classes. And so if one schedule for six, 12 isn't always, you know, the best for our, all of our students and what's going to fit their needs. So we need to just do a deep dive into that, too, and see what our staffing looks like.
I think it's fantastic that you're looking at it. I always worry when we make a switch like that, that all of a sudden it gets to be this set in stone kind of thing. Nothing's set in stone. That you're looking at it, shift and move, whatever it takes for a better outcome for the kids. I'm game for it. I mean, it was the best at the time we did. But modifying it, if you see something better, I think it's fantastic that you're just looking at that program and making sure we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, and having a process to it. I wasn't involved in the switch from the seven period to the block. So I wasn't quite sure how that all came about, but I know it came about quickly. And so we just want to make sure that we're, we're covering all of our bases.
If you go to a hybrid, is, will it be implemented in the 22, 23 school year or would it take a year to?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, we would want to, we want to do so. If we're going to make any changes and adjustments, we would do it for next school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Rick. We got more activities.
That Sunday, we had Soup Sandwich and Song, which was a fundraiser. Nick and Cheryl had talked about that a couple of meetings ago about having a fundraiser prior to their trip to Branson. So that was, that was cool. This is also section time for fall sports. So like we talked about before, we got the meeting going. We have a volleyball match in about an hour and a half. I guess started against Litchfield. And football had their season come to a close on Saturday in the second round. Cross-country competed last week up in Pierce at the golf course there. And an individual for us, Maddie Wetland, ran very well during a spot in the state cross-country meet. So she'll be running at St. Olaf College at noon on Saturday. So we're going to get some people into a van and go down there and cheer her on. So it's exciting. First time, I think, in 10 years we've had a cross-country runner compete at state. Just wanted to say thanks to all the fans who purchased tickets to our football game last Tuesday. I know it's a lot different than what we're used to, just coming up and paying cash. And I want to thank our ticket takers for their flexibility as well, using a new app that we hadn't used before. Just to kind of clear up some confusion as to why we went that route. Once we get into playoffs, we move into section five, takes control of what we do pretty much. And they're very much a hands-on type of section. They control what we're doing and how we're doing everything. So that was why we made that change, because we were forced to. Volleyball, though, we're in section three, so it's a different section. They have a very much hands-off approach. You can do things how you're accustomed to doing throughout the season. So that's why tonight, when fans show up and this past Friday, they could show up and pay cash. So we don't have the online option because we don't need to. So hopefully that clears up some confusion that we've had that was out there. I know we had some fans show up and why are we doing this? Because we were forced to by our section. And it actually went really smooth. I think the feedback from people was actually really good for that. So appreciate everybody's flexibility there. Couple of months, a couple of meetings ago, Maggie suggested doing something for Title IX. Remember that? Coach Humbert put something together two weeks ago prior to our last regular season home volleyball game against Eden Valley. And she did an outstanding job, brought a lot of people to their feed. People were very appreciative and the feedback that we got from that was very good and positive as well. So that was really cool to see, 50th anniversary of Title IX this year. So it was awesome for Coach Humbert to do that. Soon enough, we'll be transitioning into that winter season. So I encourage all families out there to get their sports physicals taken care of, their fees paid, and their eligibility forms taken care of. If it can either be taken care of on our school website or come into the high school office and we'll help you get that taken care of as well. And just want to say thank you to Warner Electric and DEI for getting our football field ready to go for the fall again. So we can have those games underneath the lights. So it was good to see everybody back out there and students up on the hill and back to some normalcy again, so.
Question about tickets.
Yeah.
Is the state high school league looking at doing something so there is a overall, for one section to do this, one section to do that, and New London Spicer does that, and we do this? It's very confusing to know, especially if you're out in the public and you don't have kids in the school. Well, what do I have to do for this game?
Right.
And it's also just a little disconcerting to me that, that some people my age and above may have some difficulty with that. Is the state high school league looking into trying to bring some kind of consistency, consistency to all of this?
I think eventually that will be the route that we go. We'll make that decision soon. But for now, I think they've kind of lifted up the different sections to make those decisions. Which, like you said, answers a lot of confusion because we're in section five for football and section three for volleyball. Things are very different. So we're trying to get that out, communicate it as best we can through our, through Miranda, the office. And I know sending it out to our football players and their coaches and trying to get out to families as best we can. So, yeah, I think soon enough we'll.
I mean, I can just see grandparents coming from a distance and just assuming you can pay. I don't know how many people did show up or nobody showed up.
We didn't provide a cash option, but we were strongly encouraged by our section to keep it online, to stay consistent.
I know that's the way everybody's going, but it's just, it's tough.
Yeah, for some people.
All right, thanks. All right, and Matt, our community ed update.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, sorry, the PAC, PAC report, volumes continues to increase and many new members continue to join, which is good. Last Saturday, we had a 28-team volleyball tournament, which went well, very well. And this Saturday, we have a large regional basketball camp. So people coming from, you know, quite ways to come to our town, which is good. It's a win-win for, for our programs here and also for the community.
Did you say 28 teams?
There was, yeah, 28 teams on Saturday. Dave, our custodian worked from 5:45 AM to 9:00 PM, and he just did an awesome job. So that reports back from that group and they couldn't have been happier. So, yeah. And our, our basketball program was able to do concessions and it was a big pace setter, regional or state tournament, I think, for volleyball states.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, it sounds like it went well. They really like our facility and they wanted to book again for next year already. So, so absolutely, get them in the books. The new strength and cardio equipment has been ordered. We can continue, want to say fresh and relevant for our members. The final item on my list for the project was completed last week. And that was a, there was a big stain on the floor, the concrete outside of the wrestling room from during construction. So that was all ground, ground down and polished and redone. If you went down there now, you wouldn't even really notice the difference. So I think that was one of my last things on my list. I don't know if you have anything else that's hanging out there.
No.
Overall, so I'm really happy about the roof. I'm much more comfortable going into the winter ice season now with what they did. Really glad it wasn't a Band-Aid and they really thought it through. And I'm really hoping that that's going to take care of, and I have every confidence that it will take care of our, our issues. So we're finishing up our winter community ed program brochure now. So it's like that in your mailbox. It's on Black Friday and online a week prior to that, many new classes and activities. Pause report, we're up to 102 during the first school year registrations and we continue to add participants. Livestream update, tonight's the final Bulldog livestream broadcast of our fall season with the game, with the volleyball game. And kind of some interesting facts, the last game, the, against holding for the football game, we had over 1,800 views at the end of the game, just on Facebook, or just on YouTube. So huge, huge viewership. So we feel it's really good PR for our district. It's a good service because there's a lot of people that just physically can't, can't come or are in other parts of the, of the country. We get people from all over, grandparents in Arizona that chime in sometimes or text in. So I'm proud of our, our team and our students that are part of that. And plus, we're able to do the operational levy video that, you know, put together multiple times per game. So kind of a way to get that better pushed out there. We're currently at 1,469 subscribers to our YouTube channel. We've increased that, increase of 29 over the last 29 days. So we'll also be livestreaming in the elementary Veterans Day program next week. So try to do some things outside our regular schedules, too. Preschool programming update, the preschool staff and the, the parent committee did a great job on the, on the Fall Festival fundraiser for the playground. Later, earlier in, in October, they raised quite a bit of money. We're currently working on finalizing, finalizing the plans, community ed. We've had some good years and only been saving money. So we're looking at investing a big chunk of money of our general community fund balance into that project, too, to be able to get it done sooner than later. So we're, they're really excited about, about that, right outside the doors and having a specific playground for, you know, that, that population. So. We're working on other, finalizing the plans. It'll be also looking at sponsorship opportunities that the general public could sponsor to be part of that playground, too. So. The most recent Bulldog community, the Bulldog Bark went on, I think, yesterday. Any people you want to add into that list? Just letting them know. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, so technology director, I was hoping that I would be able to say at this meeting that we secured a technology director. I'm back to square one, looking for a candidate. We've made an offer and it just, the timing wasn't right with the responsibilities outside of, outside of their current position. So moving on, looking for a technology director still. And buildings and grounds, we still are in desperate need of custodial support. So again, you know, I think we've got a, a plan in place to work some individuals into a role, hopefully long-term. But that takes time. In the meantime, if anybody is even interested in subbing, we would be happy to take somebody on as a sub to help us in, especially in the evenings at the secondary building. So that would be great. So that would be the communication items that I have for today.
We will move on to the Bounce Back Project.
All right. So I'm really excited to share this information with you. At our in-service on Friday, there, the staff development committee worked with a community partners to bring in the Bounce Back Project. And really what it is, is you can see kind of the summary here. It's, it has a single purpose to impact the lives of individuals, communities, and organizations by, by promoting health through happiness. Numerous studies have shown that using simple tools to help us retrain our minds to focus on the positive can increase feelings of well-being and decrease feelings of depression. These tools can also open us to the possibility of greater social connection, improved sleep, enhanced memory, and stronger immune systems. It's simple and life-changing. So that's kind of the summary from the website from the Bounce Back team. And what happened is, so I'm going to just pull up the Bounce Back presentation. I'll pass that. I'm not going to, I'm not going to show this. Not going to show it, you know, like, present it like they presented it because, but I do want you to be able to see some of what we had talked about. Okay, well, we're going to get the, the whole nine yards. But, so the Bounce Back Project really originated from a couple of partners. And you'll see that it was Centricare and Stellus Health. And it originated in the Buffalo and Monticello areas. And it came through the healthcare system. And, and unfortunately, it came as a result of some tragedy within those communities. And they came together as teams to really talk about how do they support the individuals within those communities that are, are working through very traumatic events. And so these teams came together and they, they did the research, they pulled together all of these resources that they now, that they've also had a research to bring forward and support for strategies. And they've been training different communities. They've been training schools in partnerships with the hospital staff and, and community staff. And so this, the Bounce Back Project, you might see this, this beach ball, like, across central Minnesota in various forms. And it really is a, it's a purposeful, strategic reminder. Um, it's a a purposeful strategic um, reminder. To pull out some different strategies of resiliency. So um, in short, really what it was is um, bringing some tools to. And it was nurses, physicians, healthcare leaders, community members. Um, but bringing those tools all together that started in healthcare and then coming into our communities. So what we did on on Friday is learned about the uh, essentially the top five um, strategies that they have been sharing. Thing and seeing um. Seeing the benefit from in their schools, in their um, communities, and so those are some of the things that we talked about. So um, the first thing that really is is what all of those are is to really focus on building our resilience. And so they talked just about the definition of resilience. Um, and then they talked a little bit about the pillars. And they didn't spend a ton of time on this, but they did talk about um, really how important resilience is. Um, when they talked, she, the the individual who was doing this training for us. Um, kind of paused here on this slide and and really highlighted just socially. Over the course of the last few years, the things that we as a as a. As a general public have come across that have challenged our resiliency, right? So we've had um, we've had a polarization in our political views. Do I vaccinate? Do I not vaccinate? Do I mask? Do I not mask? You know, some of those things that we've had to deal with from a community perspective. We've seen economic increases, we've seen impacts from just COVID in general. We've seen inflationary costs. Those are all things that have been really challenging. And and if and they can just cause stressors, right? And so I think it was really important for us to, all of us as staff to hear. And be reminded that these things that we all kind of come across and face are not just unique to us, but they're they're very public. Concerns, right? And then she talked a little bit about um, just how um, we're hardwired one way or the other. Some of us are are more naturally um, inclined to be glass half-full individuals and some of us are more naturally inclined to be the glasses half-empty. And that's okay, it's just you need to be more um, aware if your glass is half-empty. And then uh, think about how you can be more consistent in your approach to um, build resiliency. Um, she'll see in this slideshow that there are teaching resources that are are brought in here. Um, and and the, again, the the focus here really comes back to the research. That talks about why this is so important and how this is so good for our communities. Our staff, our students, all of us to learn how to be and build our resilience. Okay, because it impacts our physical or mental or emotional and our social health. So. That was just a little bit about the background of um, where they were coming from and and what. The, why they they took the time, the effort and the energy to focus on some strategies. To build resilience throughout the communities, okay? So um, and then they they just started talking about some tools. So these are some things and now these things that we talk about are just gonna, I'm gonna highlight and then I'm gonna. Share with you some of the things that our staff ended up doing with them after this presentation. So random act of kindness are are truly just that and when she was talking about the the data around this, she talked about how. Um, a a random act of kindness that an individual does for somebody else. Has as much benefit to the giver as it does to the receiver. And I think that that was a really important part that she highlighted because we see people. In a a coffee drive-through, buying coffee for the car behind them. And how that impacts somebody, then it goes down the line and it goes down the line. Um, and she just talked about how. Simple it can be to do a random act of kindness and it doesn't have to be this grand gesture. And that all it doesn't always even have to be monetary. So then she shared for us just some different random acts of kindness that have taken place. In their communities. So as you look at these pictures, you'll see communities, you'll see Buffalo, you'll see um, the. I liked the the bedpan humor of the clean, you know, the medical humor filled with uh, bedpan filled with candy. You know, kind of a a funny little way to spread the joy. Somebody threw a five-dollar bill into, this is a little bit dated, think about the red box, right? So if we think about our red box and threw a five-dollar um, a five-dollar bill with a note that says, get your treat on me. Right? It's just something that and and the recipient may never know who did it for them, um, but it's really about. Thinking of other people or doing something for somebody else without necessarily even being known. And they talked about how that's one of the things that really can just change your wiring and it changes your um. Your chemical makeup, you get the endorphins and you get the dopamines and you get the the chemical impact of kindness, okay? She also went on to talk about um, just really how important that is when somebody else sees that act of kindness. Um, and it it was increasing their kindness in others, it increases generosity in others and it just really is about that. Seeing somebody and you, if I witnessed that, I also have that feel-good feeling, okay? Um, this is one that I've had, um, actually, one of the superintendent that's um, in in my colleague group has talked about this strategy. Uh, since he learned it, um, because his his school district was part of um, the bounce back years ago. And it's and it's very simple, but it's super powerful. So it's three good things. And so we talked about how could we roll this forward and how could we talk about this as a staff or how could we talk about this with our colleagues? How can we talk about this with our families and our friends? So it's super simple, it's what are three good things that went well today? And then asking yourself, did I have a role and what? Sometimes finding three good things might be hard. Because there are some days that are really just hard, hard days. And so it might be. Something you didn't do. But maybe you wanted to. Right? But it can be everything as simple as she talked about. Um, sitting down with her family at dinner and how. Uh, when they first started having kind of this reflection and and trying to model some of this work. How hard it was for her husband and their two kids. To come up with three good things that had happened throughout the course of the day. Um, and I've done, I've done a lot of research on this and I know I've heard this before, but our brains are hardwired. To um, see the negative and to see the bad, some of that is is our our fight or flight index and it's our fight or flight reflex. So we're we're more naturally inclined to see the things that don't go well and the see and the things that um, are not. Um, pleasant, so when we reframe our thinking and we we cognizantly. Start looking for the things that, okay, I could report this as a good thing, it helps us see things differently. So we talked about how we could just bring this forward and into our classrooms. Are there things that we can model with our classrooms and with our students of this is something that went really well this class period? Is there a way that we can bring that just to an assignment of? I want you to spend one week writing down three good things every day, okay? If the simple strategy is called three good things, okay? And here's the research the of of why. Where it comes from, um, there was uh, research and clinical trial-based results. They talked about lower burnout and depression, better work-life balance, less conflict at homework and school. There was higher levels of happiness and improved sleep quality. That's the one that I'm gonna pause on because when I visited with my colleague, that was one of the most important things that he talked about. And I'm not gonna lie, I mean, I, there's a lot of things that go through my mind when I try to lay down and I go to sleep at night and when I pause. And if I actively think of the positives. It gives me some reprieve to to pause. And he talked about how that changed his sleep patterns and how he was able to just fall asleep differently. So I thought that was another really interesting way to bring forward kind of the research around. Um, that that they have the research that goes with. All of these, I guess, strategies. So um, this was the the three good things and and everything, you know, think of one good thing and and. Um, so at this moment, she paused and she asked the whole group, what's one good thing that happens today? Um, and we had somebody talk about a good cup of coffee. We had somebody talk about um, a good morning treat. And we talked, had somebody talk about um, a slow, easy morning. So three, there, those were three items that our staff just came up with that really framed their, it was a good start to their morning, okay? Um, and the next slide is really the the um, why it's so important and then she talked about the the hardwiring. And the fact that it it really is um, that fight or flight and so we really do have to. Um, focus ourselves to find some of the positives, especially on those really hard days. And then she talked a little bit about gratitude and she talked about um, November is often um, perceived as the month of um. Gratefulness because we come into Thanksgiving. And um, she put this little meme up and she said, how many of you recognize this? You know, it's it's often people complain about what isn't going well. What is um, what they don't like about something and and it's not often that there's. A lineup to tell people what you're grateful for, okay? So then she she kind of challenged us to say, you know, where do you spend most of your time? And and that was a, that was a a good pause of, oh, where do I spend most of my time? Where do I spend most of my energy and my efforts? And then she talked about um, the gratitude, it's a gift to yourself. When the staff went into um, to the uh. Auditorium in the morning, the elementary and the secondary, um, they had a gratitude board and it looked similar to this, it was just a piece of paper. And it just says, what are you grateful for? And um, and it provided an opportunity for our staff just to stop and add a note of gratitude, something that they were thankful for. Um, and I, you know, I didn't look at all of them, I think I I looked early when I put mine on there and, but there was everything from. Um, friends and family to good coffee to um, you know, there was, there was just a whole host of things that people are grateful for. And when you stop and read what other people are grateful for, it also kind of um. It caused, I think it causes you to stop and recognize that, wow, there are a lot of things that that we can reframe and see as as gratitudes. So then she talked about just sending letters and um, the challenge was uh, to write a a letter, a gratitude letter. To one of these individuals. And we talked about how could we incorporate that into our classrooms and are there things that we could? Um, lessons that we could develop or devise around writing letters of gratitude to family or to friends. Um, coworkers, significant others, mentors. Um, and then she told a story about um, a letter that she had written. Uh, and and she's kind of funny because she said her family, they've made, don't bounce back me, it's like a verb, like stop, stop bouncing back, you know. However, she said it, but essentially they all know what she's doing, right? And um, she had written a letter to uh, her significant other. And given it to him a long time ago and. Um, and again, he knew why this was happening and he knew where this was coming from. And, you know, he takes the letter, kind of tucks it aside and and then they were moving, they were packing up boxes or they were doing something. And um, she found his letter when they were packing up the boxes. And those little things really do matter and they really talk about, she really just reframed the conversation about how. Taking a moment to just send somebody a quick note, how important that is and she talked about the research of how. There's impact for not only the receiver, but for the giver. Again, it's that selflessness that you give to somebody else and and it was really um, I thought it was very interesting to have. That kind of put forward to us as we think about how we could be um, send a note of of gratitude to somebody um, over the course of the next month. She also talked about um, the social connections and um, really understanding like um. How and knowing how much we want to be connected to others, um, I'm gonna come forward to um. So. This was really about like um. Pausing and stopping and and being grateful for the things and being happy in the moments of what you have. Instead of um, kind of living in the social network of what everybody else is doing, right? And and I think when you look at some of our youth today, um, they really are, um, they're stuck on social media, they see everybody else's highlight reel. Um, I think we all see everybody else's highlight reel, right? We see the things that are that are are um. At the absolute best for those, for all of our. Social friends, but um, that doesn't remind, that doesn't tell about the trouble, it doesn't tell about the things and if we don't. If we aren't honest to to know. Everybody has their back door, you know, everybody has the things that they don't put on social media. And um, she really talked about how. It's so important to not say, when I have this, I'll be happy. If I get an A in this class, I'll be happy. If I have a four-point-oh, I'll be content with my my high school career. If I have. Um, if I buy this car, if I take that trip, it's it don't. She taught, really talked about the chasing happiness and I think that for, when I think about my kids and what they've experienced. In just the world of social media, it is, it's an important reminder to not wait to be happy until later. Um, and then she has a um, and and I'm, all of this is LinkedIn and so you can watch the video and you can see um, the the research behind. Why it's so important to for social connections. And she talked about um, the long-term impact of loneliness. Um, and I think about our kids that sit at the tables by themselves, I think about our kids that don't have anybody that they talk to. As they walk through the schools, um, those were some of the things that I immediately drew from that and I think about some of our um. Some of the community members that we have who don't have people come to visit them and how can we? Work to form connections to people and this is the research, this Harvard study of adult development is the research about why. Social connection is so incredibly important, okay? And then uh, let me keep going here, um. Um, and then, so this was again, just that humans are wired for true social connection and she talks about um. Identifying, um, this was, I I think probably one of my biggest takeaways of this is who is your four AM friend? Who are your friends that you would not just like? Click on for social media, but who is it that you would reach out to that you would contact that you would call at four AM and you knew that they would be there, right? That's really, I think, what's cool about um, taking the time to pause and and know about your social connections, okay? Um, so then she kind of walked through again, this is just our summary, so I'm gonna just kind of click through here and get out of this actually, because I want to show you then. What our staff did. Um, so the, again, the professional development committee um, brought brought this in and said um. And said, okay, so now take a look at these items and. And uh, just randomly assigned people into groups. And said, okay, so group one, um, what could you do, what could we do? Um, to develop a staff wellness day. Okay, so what are some things that if we were going to try to uh, focus on the wellness of our staff? Um. What are things that we, who would we tap into? What could that look like? And if we, what would be of value? And so you'll see that there was a group of people that just identified some strategies of things that would be like a a social, a wellness day. For the staff at the Payne's Hilarious Schools. Um. A second group talked about, okay, thinking about what you learned today, what could we, how could we develop an advisory lesson? Around these topics and around these areas. Um, one of the things they talked about was uh, speed connections activity. Um, it was kind of funny because they, the the woman presenting talked about how they set up individuals in a room. Kind of like a speed dating concept and walked through like you get a minute to talk to the person across from you. And see what do you have in common? And you, she talked about how people really don't. I had no idea that you were interested in rat finding or I had no idea that you liked to cook, right? You just, you you don't, you see people, you walk across people's paths, but you don't truly get to know them and so it was. That was one of the things that our advisory, um, our group two thought was kind of a good um, speed connections activity. Um, group three uh, talked about. If we were trying, gonna try to engage our parents and engage our community, what are some things that we can do and how would we like that to look? Um, because one of the things that that, uh, again, people asked about is can you come back and do some of this work for our community? And could you come back and do some of this work for maybe our our staff or our students? Um, because there was a a really um. I guess an acknowledgement that, boy, some of these things are are really pretty. I guess, an acknowledgement that, boy, some of these things are are really pretty simple. But they matter and they're meaningful. And so they talked about how we could do that by making sure maybe we had childcare, making sure that we spend more time focusing on the positive. Really thinking about, you know, what are some of the the great, the the gratitudes that we can do? Sharing the statistics around this so people know that, you know, it seems so simple, it really cannot make that much of a difference. But it really does and putting the research to go with that. There was a group that talked about the random acts of kindness, what are the things that we already do to to share random acts of kindness? And what are things that we could do? And I thought this was really a just a nice kind of reflection of, man, we, there are some things that our staff and our students already do. And then building a building upon those. And then what can we do for our students for our random acts of kindness? And then the final one was, what are some things that we could do to get this into our classrooms? So that our students can really work on building their connections, they can work on finding their gratitude, they can work on. Having three positives, really work on reframing the negative and and refocusing. So those are just some of the ideas that our staff talked about. And then our staff went into activities where they went through and did. In each of one of these areas. The the intent and the purpose was to really reflect on or look at. Participated in an activity where you were giving a random act of kindness or you were developing, you were writing a note of gratitude to somebody. Or you were creating some some affirmations of positivity. So it really was now applying some of what you had heard, not just reflecting on it and and talking about it as a group. So I think the reason that I have this here is we, this is something that the Painesville area schools. Has, if this is not our solo mission, so the individuals who came from Centricare, one of them is a community. Like in a community engagement type individual who wants to say, look at us as a whole, our whole Painesville area community. How can we bring this type of work to our our whole community? One of our our miss, our faith based organizations is very vested in looking at. How is it that they can help support this either financially or just using some different strategies or. But the the beautiful part of this is this is not just a solo mission of the Painesville area schools. This is a, this was an an effort that was brought forward by community members and by our Centricare. The, there was a Sterns County Public Health individual, there is a the. Community engagement specialist from Centricare, there was a, we've had the individual from Centricare out of. Out of Monticello, so there's been a lot of individuals that have come together. That have done this work in other communities and really seen it, seen communities thrive. And so I wanted to share that because I think this was, this was a whole focus of a morning for our staff. And I think it's important for you to know as a board, some of the work that they've been doing and and taking a look at how they can incorporate that for our students as well. So that's really what I, the the gist of the bounce back project. I did put the three good thing handout in there, so I'm gonna challenge anybody that would like to do it. To take, find three good things that happened to you throughout the day. Maybe you do it at the dinner table with your kids, maybe you do it before you go to bed, you write it down for yourself. But there's my challenge, find three good things that have happened throughout the course of the day. And that's where I'll end it for today and I'll turn it over to you, Thomas.
Well, thank you. We talked about a quarter, there's so many good things that happen in the district, you know, amongst our our staff and our students and just, you know, be able to. Get highlights and understand some of those presentations, I I do appreciate myself, so. Any to add on that? But otherwise, we'll move on to the drawing table. To anything anybody would like to get more information on, whether data or have concerns or comments or compliments from.
Have you been hearing, I was curious about the. The vote coming up, are you, are people contacting you and asking questions or is it kind of silent? Are you getting good?
I'm getting questions, yep, I've got, I've gotten some good questions. I've been, so again, I I was. On Sunday, I was invited into Painesville Lutheran and had a group of individuals just asking really good questions, clear, some of those clarifying. I I feel like it's been a good opportunity to share information that I think is then being, it's just re regenerated and recirculated. But I I do have people calling and asking me questions and so that's important, that's good.
Is there kind of a theme on what the question is, the questions are, is it kind of all over?
Most recently, the theme has been on question two and the impact of, and so that's part of why. The the newspaper article this week is really about just the nuts and bolts of the two questions. Yep, so it really is, it's about the cost of number one and then the for number two. I think there's a lot of concern about like how was the inflationary index determined? And is that something the district just chooses and just does and and no, it 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 is not our choice, it is set for us. So I I tried to put that information into the newspaper cuz that, I was getting a lot of questions about the inflation, inflation question.
I believe, but early voting started today at City Hall and.
I think it was, it's already, it's in.
It's in, it's in there anyway, so yeah, that's, you know, that's available, I think, just. For everybody, everybody listening, everybody here, just encourage voters, encourage people to get out and vote, that's the biggest thing. And that would be important, we have a relatively low turnout as far as our. District was concerned in the last vote and I think it just would be important that people get out and vote. So between now and next week, Tuesday, encourage everybody to go out and vote. Anything else?